Testing, testing, okay.
Test, test.
Good morning, I'd like to welcome you to the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting this Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and also that we have a quorum present at the meeting with two commissioners being excused, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Shanefield. With that, I'd ask everyone, please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and I'd just like to announce that we're starting to return back to normalcy. Today is the first day under the revised orders from the governor dealing with face coverings, and they are no longer mandated or recommended in public meetings at this point in time. So it's nice to see people here, be able to see the smiles and the frowns, and we don't cause frowns, so anyhow, welcome, and it's good to see everybody, and thank you for joining us this morning. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I do believe, Commissioner Lloyd, do you have a amendment to the agenda?
Do I?
Starting personnel for executive session?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to you about this morning, but it sounds like someone else did, but I would like to make that.
All right, very good. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda amended to add personnel under executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Comish- by Commissioner Toman to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'm all second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes. First up will be the March second, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'd move that we accept those minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve those minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up is to prove the minutes from March third, two thousand and twenty-one, for the Intergovernmental Joint Leadership Meeting. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I would move that we would accept those minutes as presented, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to accept the minutes as presented for the Intergovernmental Joint Leadership Meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next order of business, tab B is acceptance of the bills. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I will move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Toman to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next order of business is out of planning and zoning. We'll have a public hearing as well as a conditional use. So to present this morning in planning and zoning, I believe, is Mr. Bingham. And good morning, Eric. How are you?
Good morning, thanks. Doing good.
Good. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first order of business here is a conditional use permit for above-ground storage in excess of five hundred gallons. The location of this is the Crossroads Travel Plaza located southwest quarter, section twenty-seven, township twenty-five north, range one oh six west, which is two highway, twenty-eight, Farson, Wyoming. So the location of it is the convenience store that's south of the ice cream store, just so everybody understands the location of this. It's within the Farson Eden Fire District. It's at the crossroads there of highway twenty-eight and highway one ninety-one. It's a private water system and a private sewer system that's located. So what they're doing is replacing the under- old underground storage tanks that are located on the property and putting above-ground storage tanks instead of the below-ground ones. And so that's basically what they're doing here, that it's going to be gasoline and diesel, that it's going to be stored on the property. The zoning of it is commercial, so it has the appropriate zoning for the conditional use permit, and then it's surrounded by commercial recreational services. To the east of the property, you can see agriculturally zoned property. To the south is that mobile home court that's been there, also used as an RV-type park. That just shows you the site plan on the next slide there, and it shows that it meets all the appropriate setbacks. The zoning resolution is more restrictive than the fire code, and so with it meeting the zoning resol- resolution, it far exceeds of the fire requirements. And then, this is just photos on the next slide that show you the location surrounding. I'm sure everybody's very familiar with location. So we have to make sure that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, and so it's going to be replacing old underground storage tanks, and they will comply with the fire codes so that they meet all safety regulations. We do not see it adversely affecting any adjacent properties. It's compatible with all existing u- uses of adjacent property. Mr. Brown's intent is to eventually replace the convenience store with a new convenience store, just so you're aware. This is the first part of that process. Has adequate public facilities. There's a fire protection pond that's located on the northwest corner of the property, and the tanks will be, actually, they're going to be double-walled tanks, so that means they do not need to be died. And, but they will have pipe bollards around them to make su- to assure from vehicle collision. And the minimum adverse effects on the natural environment, we don't see any. From a, from, actually, from an environmental standpoint, above-ground storage tanks are more environmentally friendly than below-ground, because you can see if there's leaks, obviously. And does it conform to the zoning resolution? Yes, it does. As far as agency comments, we received them from Colorado State Gas and Dominion Energy, and they had no concerns. No public comment was received. At the March tenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the board voted four to zero to approve the request. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends, and so does the Planning and Zoning Commission approval of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. First of all, I look at the audience and realize that our slides didn't show until late into the presentation, so I would ask if the, anybody in the audience, is there a particular slide you heard about that you want us to go back so you can view it? Looks like everybody's okay with that. So with that, Mr. Bingham, thank you. Is there any representation for Mr. Brown here this morning?
I don't know if he's on the Zoom call or not.
Okay.
There you go.
Very good. And your first name, sir? Jeremy. Thank you for being here. Do you have anything to add? If you do, please come up to the mic. If not, you can stay seated. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate that. So with that, Commissioners, any question for Mr. Bingham or for Jeremy? We have no questions. So at this time, I believe, first step is to have a public hearing regarding the recommendation of Resolution two-one-dash-Zeb-three-dash-zero-dash-Zeb-zero-one for approval of a conditional use permit for the storage of combustible inflammable liquid in excess of five hundred gallons in the commercial zoning district. So at this time, I will open up floor for public hearing. Floor is open for public hearing. Floor is open. One more time. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, your pleasure regarding Go one more page. Regarding Resolution two-one-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-dash-zero-one for approval of a conditional use permit for the storage of combustional combustible inflammable liquid in excess of five hundred gallons in a commercial zoning lot for Kim Brown at Crossroad. Commissioner Toman?
I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioners, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations. Next up is under planning and zoning. Number two is a conditional use permit. It's a renewal of dog kennels, and I believe, Mr. Bingham, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the property owner is Joshua Wells. The applicant is also the same, and the location of it is on the top of the belt loop there in Rock Springs. It's on five-stable lane, so it's a access road that comes off the belt loop there. It's currently zoned agricultural. It is within the growth management area. It's in the Fire District One area. City of Rock Springs Water serves the site, and it comes off highway three seventy-six, the south side belt loop. On-site septic system, infrastructure. So this is called the White Mountain Kennels, and this is actually a renewal of a conditional use permit. We actually approved this two years ago. And so the kennel is used to train and sell qualified gun dogs and companions. It can house up to ten, we have ten, he was approved for dog, ten dog kennels. On the rules and regulations, we're only allowed to approve them on the first request up to two years, just to make sure everything goes okay. And just for your information, we have received no complaints regarding the site. Miss, the applicant, Mr. Wells is requesting a ten-year application period, and the property is adjacent to agricultural types of uses. So if you, if you go up there and you, and you drive past on the south belt loop there, you'll notice there are horse corrals that are up there, and so there are, the area is surrounded by agricultural types of uses. So this just shows you the general location of the property, and the dog kennels are located to the rear of the home. And this goes to show you that we did post the site and surrounding properties. So with kennels, there are specific requirements for them that they have to meet. They have to be, the big thing is they have to be clean and sanitary, and animal odors have to be, not be detectable beyond the lot lines of the property, that they're screened, that they're located behind the, usually behind the residence or building, or somehow can, you know, block the sound, and that they're term for two years on the initial application. As far as consistent with the comprehensive plan, like I stated, it's a great addition to the area of Sweetwater County. It provides the training of animals on-site, and also provides dog kenneling opportunities. Since two thousand and eighteen, we have not received any complaints, so we have not seen any adverse effects on adjacent properties. There's only one other residence that's located in that area. As far as compatible with existing allowable uses, as I stated, it's surrounded by agricultural types of uses. It does have adequate public facilities, has public water there, fire protection, adequate provisions for maintenance of use. Again, these are indoor kennels. There's an area, there are dog runs that are located. Minimum adverse effects on the natural environment, we don't see any adverse effects. Since the two thousand and eighteen, that we have not received any concerns about traffic ingestion, so we have not had any traffic issues in the last two years. As far as adverse effects, public health, safety, and welfare, we have had no concerns with that, and it does conform to the zoning resolution. Colorado Interstate Gas and Dominion Energy were the only two agency comments, utility comments, and they had no concerns. So the land use staff is in support, and so was the Planning and Zoning Commission. They voted four to zero to approve the request for ten commercial kennels for a period of ten years. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Is Mr. Wells here? Yes, sir. Do you have anything more to add? If you do, please come up to the podium. All right, thank you. That was the owner of, of the kennels. With that, we'll open up for public hearing regarding this recommended conditional use permit, and that conditional use permit is Resolution two-one-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-dash-zero-two, and it's a conditional use permit to allow commercial dog kennels on a property owned by Joshua Wells. This is a renewal after two years, and it's a request for up to ten years. Is that correct, Mr. Bingham?
Yes, that's correct.
With that, I'll open up the floor for public comment. Floor is open for public comment. One more time, public comment. Floor is now closed. With that, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution two-one-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-dash-zero-two for use, for approval of the conditional use permit?
I'll, I'll approve.
Commissioner Toman makes a recommendation to, or I'm sorry, moves to approve Resolution two-one-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-two, which is approval of a conditional use permit to allow commercial dog kennels on property owned by Joshua Wells. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations, ten-year permit. Good to go, thank you. With regard to the permits, I want to congratulate Mr. Wells from the standpoint of past two years. I was here when we did your first one, and things went very well, and you've done a good job. Also, for Kim Brown Enterprises out of Farson Eden, Mr. Brown, two, three years ago, made a commitment to give back to the Farson Eden area. He started with the planning of the shelter that sits in the park in the little town of Eden, and carried through with that, and it's a great thing for tourists, as well as the area of the shelter that's there, and we want to thank him for that. And at that time, he also made a commitment to continue to improve the area and give back to the residents of Eden. And with this conditional use permit for him, that has continued, he's lived by his promises, let's put it like that. And I just want the Kim Brown Enterprises to know that the county appreciates the commitment to the Farson Eden area and the continued desire to see that area grow, and support the citizens of Sweetwater County, as well as citizens of Farson Eden. I thank you, the Kim Brown Enterprise, for that on behalf of Sweetwater County Commissions. With that, Commissioners, our next order of business is county resident concerns. So I'll open the floor now for county resident concerns. County resident concerns. Wow.
I expected some today.
Give another partial minute?
Through the chair. I'm good. Whatever you want to do.
Did you mean to skip the approval of the monthly reports and the rebates?
That was all under the
It was under the financials. Okay.
Any public concerns? Nope. We'll close this portion of our agenda for the public comments. With that, we'll move into Commissioner Comments and Reports, and first up is Commissioner Lloyd. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and want to start with an apology in prepping for this meeting, which I did multiple times. I failed to realize my name was on top of the list, so I will bring my eleven dollars for donors next time, Doc, because I, I felt the miss that, so I missed probably some of the most important business on the agenda. But a couple things, just some community recognitions I'd like to do. Just want to thank Planning and Zoning. When they bring stuff to us, that committee is very thorough. Eric and his department is very thorough, and we have great information prior to coming to the meeting to make really good decisions, and I just want to thank them for the work and development they've done. So thank you, guys, and thanks, Eric, Jim, and everyone in your office. So also, want to just congrats a couple of local things. The Green River Basketball Teams and the Rock Springs Boys Team and Farson Eden's team for their showing's estate. I thought that was really great. Next, I just kind of want to recognize, actually, in nineteen eighty-seven, President, then President Reagan actually named March Disability Awareness Month, and it's a month in which we, as citizens of the United States, are encouraged to recognize the contributions made to our country by people with disabilities, and remembering that really, it should be the disability second and the person first. And I just want to recognize, you know, it's something that's near and dear to me, but something that I think is amazing, and I really want to thank all those employers that give those folks opportunities, all the agencies that provide opportunities and support to those organ- those individuals, because they are a vital part of our community. And I just want to recognize that today, and just knowing it is March Awareness Month. To some of my liaison reports, I did attend a Conservation District meeting, and really actually surprisingly enjoyed it a lot. I learned a lot, and I think as a commissioner, that's probably one of my weaker areas in knowledge is public lands, and I'm willing to admit, and it was really good to be with a group of highly educated people in that area to, to further develop my knowledge. And I do have some follow-up I'll be doing from that meeting, but I do appreciate the work they're doing. They're working on getting a couple new district supervisors and assistant district supervisors elected, but, but I, that was, that was really the main things that came out of that meeting, and they continue to work on their projects. So I'll big thanks to Conservation District. Library, I was unable to attend their meeting. It was by Zoom, but unfortunately, STAR moved their meeting, and I was held late into a STAR meeting, which is unusual. And, but I have talked to Mr. Grubb a couple of times, and was able to prepare him that, you know, due to the STAR meeting, I may not be able to make the meeting. But I'm, in talking to Jason, they continue to move forward in programming, really probably one of the most creative groups in the county as far as creating opportunities during these changing times, even though, as Doc said today, today's a little bit different. We changed a little different. There's not a mask mandate, but as we've seen the last year with the coronavirus, the library's kind of been, to me, an exemplary group of how to continue to provide services in a different time. Their biggest thing they're working on is really budget, and I know we'll be talking about some of that a little later today, and I'll bring up some of those comments, but at that time, but that's what happened with the library. Starbus, kind of exciting times. Director Seppi, Mary Seppi, was actually appointed to the State Transit Authority Board, and she'll be on that Board of Directors for the state now for transit authorities. So congratulations to Mary for that. Also, they sent out for an RFI and did get some, they have three final bids, that they're going to be looking at going to a microtransit system rather than a public, a door-to-door, the current system. And the reason they're kind of looking at that as a change is they've kind of gone to that model during COVID, and have really seen a high level of success in going to more of a microtransit model, this kind of a, a bridge between door-to-door and using this, a set stop system. Also, in some of the difficulties in maintaining drivers, this becomes a little bit better of a system also, and so they're not committed to it, but they do have three, when I started thumbing through them last night, when we received the, the bids, three really unique bids that could be really good systems. And in fact, Cheyenne has gone from a fixed system to a system very similar to what they're looking at. So it's not a done deal, just something they're exploring, and, you know, and we will complain about COVID a lot, and I will a lot. But one of the things is, it's really kind of been great to see organizations look at things differently because of that, and I think the STAR exploring this change in ridership could be, is a good example of that. Joint Communication, I have a board meeting at the end of the month. It's on the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. And now going through my, my other folks, Public Works, Gene did give us a report, and I'll just go through it real quick. Buildings, the old juvenile probation building has been cleared out of all of its miscellaneous things. The only remaining to do is this building is to change out the interior door locks and also the one electronic lock on the outside door. We had a frozen sewer line at the Farson Road and Bridge Shop that will need to be dug up this spring and fixed. Engineering, we received the permit from the DEQ on the detention center grinder pump project, and are doing a final review of the plans and specifications before sending them out to bid later next week. The Folsom Pyramid Lester Dry Project, roadway sections are being reviewed for durability and cost. This is the final step before the seventy-five percent design drawings can be produced. Road and Bridge, crews are continuing to take advantage of the nice weather and replace delineators and signs. We had our first complaint regarding dust this past week. Our water trucks are still set up for plowing snow. However, if the lack of moisture keeps up, we will take a couple of plow trucks and convert them to their summer duty as water trucks. Crews will also start patching potholes in the next couple of weeks, once all the frost has left the ground. And finally, Parks and Recs, Chris is starting to go through all of the parks and see what damage the winter or lack of winter has caused the grass and tree. So that's Gene's report on that information. I did ask Gene, you know, I know we had a little bit of weather this weekend, and it really didn't affect the plows, and it was very minimal for them. Think if they were in Cheyenne, they would still be working. And, you know, just thoughts to those people in Cheyenne. I mean, legislature shut down a second day, still pretty much the city on shutdown due to the snow. So thoughts to those folks. Let me get my notes. I moved them. Grants, as always, I've had a couple really good conversations with Christina with grants. A lot of those conversations we'll be hearing from her later about today, and, and I want to, during, when we go through the approval of the grants for the charitable program, I want to commend her and the work she did, and John DeLeon and Bonnie for being her vetting committee, because in talking with her, there was really no clear-cut rules. It didn't matter who you talked to and what department, it was a little bit different. And so I think Christina and her group did an amazing job of vetting those and really helping support some of those local groups. And, and I'll tell you, I think there were some, and I think for the groups we weren't able to support, Christina and her group tried as many innovative and creative ways to try to help them get to that point, and in some cases, they just And in some cases, they just weren't able to meet those definitions. But Christina will be presenting that later. And then human resource, Gary and I have gone over some personnel stuff throughout the week. Him, Lauren, and I have been working on the redundancy project, looking at where we have some redundancies in the, at the county and where we might be able to find some reductions. So we're continuing to work on that. And that would be my report from HR. A couple of other things, I just having some random notes. I happened to accidentally drive through Love's parking lot the other day, and I want to commend them for a very clean lot. In fact, I saw two young men walking around the lot. They didn't look very happy, but they were working, and they were gloved up, and they were cleaning up the lot. And I know one of the big complaints, and for anyone that's ever stopped at the Loves and Wam Sutter, you'll know what I'm talking about, about trash. They've done a really nice job so far. And I know it's only been a month or two, but I think we should note that, you know, that was a great concern from this community, was the cleanliness of that lot. And I'm knocking on wood, I don't want to jinx this this early in the game, but I do think they should be commended for that. Couple other quick things, due to personal and just doing some outside things, I've been at both senior centers, and I want to commend them for the work they're doing. I was actually going to speak specifically about golden hour. I often praise Jason Grubb, but I want to talk about a different Grubb today, as Jackie Grubb, his wife, who runs the senior center, what they're doing in Green River and also in Rock Springs with drive-through mills, the activities they're doing. I think it's been a really huge relief and benefit for the seniors during this time to get them out and creating a safe environment for them to play cards and go have lunches and do things. And I think that those things are huge during this time. And I just want to thank Jackie and her group specifically for the work they've done. I know that Rochelle and them are working to open up a little bit more in Rock Springs, and they're getting closer. They opened up cards last week, and they had their craft classes going. So great work, both of those. And then I will be said, as far as my intergovernmental work, I have been slow to get out the Sixpenny email, but I'm going to get that out today or tomorrow. And some of that, though, is on hold because they're still pending legislation regarding Sixpenny and those kind of things. But we do need to get together as a group. As far as animal control, we've made the decision as a group not to move forward, because there just isn't enough joint interest at this point to move forward in a joint, in a joint concept. Lastly, and then we'll wrap up, I guess since Jeff and Lauren are on vacation, I'm taking their time. Thanks, Jeff and Lauren, but they, wherever you may be, but they just want to, you know, I just want to talk about, quickly about, I want to, I think the intention of this commission and myself as a commissioner is always to be as open and transparent as possible. And I think our, every action we've made since I've been part of this commission, I feel, has been made with that thought and concept in mind. And maybe not, it doesn't always look that way, or it doesn't feel that way, or maybe it ended up not being as open and transparent as people would like. And I just want to assure our constituents that when we look at options and concepts, we really have that in mind. And if people feel like we haven't been, I apologize and just let you know, we will be doing our best to continue to be transparent. And also, we all have open doors. And we live in a different world. My mom was a school board person for years in Evanston. And I remember late nights as a kid, watching her take calls till 10:00, 11:00 at night. So when I became a Commissioner, I kind of expected my phone would constantly ring. And maybe it's because of social media, it doesn't ring. I guess if I read social media, and for those out there, I don't anymore. I look at it a little bit, but I don't really look at some of the comments and stuff. These, if people want to have comments and ideas of how we can do things differently, my personal phone number is 371-6304. I'd like you to call it. My email is lloydroy@sweetwater.ws, and I encourage you to email me. I will sit and visit with you, and we can come up with solutions. We may not always agree, but I want people to know that this commission is open and wants to have that feedback. And if, and there are ways we can actually come to solution and agreement. And so I encourage people to do that. And with that being said, I'm currently working on a couple of projects to make myself be a little more open. Next meeting, I will be announcing, but I'm going to go back to having a set office hour a day, maybe like a three to five on Wednesdays, that every constituent will know consistently I'm in the building, that they can call, or they could come see me. I've also talked to a couple of local coffee shops, and I'm going to be rotating some through some of the local coffee shops, doing what I call, I like to be cheesy at times, so coffee with a commish or something. But you're going to know what hour a month where I'm going to be at a coffee shop, and I invite you as a constituent to come and talk to me about the issues and concerns you have. And that's a way I can reach out to you guys better. And I wanted to offer multiple platforms to do that. And, you know, as I talk about social media, you know, we all have the right to say what we want to say, and we do those things, and I respect your opinions. But if we want to make change together and deal with concerns, the communication has to be differently. And that's, it can't be done through that manner. And, you know, and I'm hoping now that we're back at a live station. And I'll be honest, the only social media thing I've really read was about this room, and I wish I wouldn't have. And I will tell you, this room was actually built so we could get back to reaching everyone. We, you know, you can't do it on a Zoom call. You can't have calls. This room allows us, and when we can get rid of the chair, six-foot spacing, we can have way more people than we ever did in a comfortable way, but yet we can reach people through technology. I'm hoping we see the citizens' concerns, numbers rise, and people come and share. And so that's what I encourage, and that's what I want to end today. Is there any comments, any questions for my other Commissioners?
Any questions, Commissioners, comments? Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Good report. Up next, Commissioner Tomon.
Yes, very good, Mr. Lloyd. And I'm watching you on the Conservation District, hoping that, hopefully you are learning great things. And if, I'm always here to answer questions. After 21 years, I might know the answers.
I told them I would probably have to refer to you both at the times, Mary.
I've contacted all 13 of my budget liaison entities and scheduled times to review their budgets. Joint Purchasing, and Marty Durnevich stepped up to the plate as usual with their joint meeting, and she's working to identify certain janitorial items that maybe would, they'd be able to set up a purchasing agreement to save the cities and the county money. So she's working to do that with the other people on the committee. My airport board is my liaison group that I work with. I watched or attended three meetings in the last two weeks, the Wyoming Business Council. Grant was approved for $3 million. I understand it still has to go through the state slipboard, but that $3 million project, $3 million project for terminal expansion is actually a $14 million FAA-funded project with 1.5 million coming from the county and Rock Springs. So that's pretty exciting that that's moving forward. It will include a terminal expansion, a septic system, a gas service line, which was approved in another special meeting. So great things are happening at the airport, and thanks to Devin and his crew. They've also committed to their 30% budget cut from the county. Federal Agency Update meeting, once a month, we meet with the federal agencies, BLM and Sea Skating National Wildlife Refuge provided updates last month. As far as federal projects, Raven Solar is in the partial draft environmental impact statement position right now, refinement by the BLM staff. And then it will come back to the agency cooperators for a final comment and review before it's finalized. The letters, and thanks to Sally, letters and emails went out to the federal agencies, inviting them to our April 21st meeting. So if you want a federal agency update, that would be a good meeting to listen to. Pacific Atlantic Trona Environmental Impact Statement has a monthly cooperator meeting, and they will also have a half-day cooperator meeting on March 25th to develop alternatives. They're waiting for project proponent preliminary reports in the mine plan. They're expecting a notice of intent on May 28th, impacts analysis, and the draft environmental impact statement on August, and then a final decision by January of 2022, and hopefully completion of the EIS by April of 2022. So hopefully, we'll see more Trona production soon. Thanks to Eric Bingham and Gene Legursky for being able to provide the on-the-ground reports on roads and railroad and other items of concern to the county. My concern is that the cities of Green River and Granger were not asked to be cooperators. So they're expecting us as a county to represent them, but I have asked them to contact those cities and see if they're comfortable with that. And also, they did tell me that once this is released for scoping, then the counties and cities can come forth and review the projects and provide comments. So they will have an opportunity to comment. So in the meantime, if there are any issues, you can contact Eric or myself, and we'll carry those forward. I was contacted by Mr. Redmond from Dominion Energy. There's been over a six-month delay in getting a gas pipeline to the new high school in Rock Springs. So I inquired of BLM why such a delay, and they said it was just the process. It was still in-house. It hadn't been sent up the ladder for final approval. And I think that's not a reasonable amount of time to do a major utility line. So I expressed that concern to the BLM. Ashley, National Forest, we've been cooperating on that for years. Their final revision for their environmental impact statement for their plan is nearing, and final comments were submitted through our membership and the coalition of local governments, and I did send them to the commission to see those comments. Legislation. A big concern for me is what's happening and what might happen with our coal-fired power plant. Mr. Davis did a presentation to the property owners in Farson last week. He did a great job. And one of the things that I learned from one of his handouts was that underground coal is one of our major contributors to our economy. It's like right at the top. And I just would like to review through our membership in this coalition of local governments, which we formed about 17 years ago. We have four counties and five county commissions that meet monthly with the legal team. So here's kind of a synopsis of what's been happening. In December of 2018, Pacific Core, through its wholly-owned subsidiary, Rocky Mountain Power, announced its intention to accelerate the retirement of its coal fleet. The company did not notify the state of Wyoming or the affected counties until it was reported in the local newspapers in 2019. With that announcement, the coalition of local governments on behalf of its member counties initiated a multifaceted strategy to evaluate and mitigate the company's plan and timeline. The coalition took six main actions. Number one, initiating communication with Pacific Core. Number two, participating in the integrated resource planning process to raise basis for the retirements, alternatives, and whether the least cost, least risk model was biased in favor of early retirement based on anticipated carbon taxes. Number three, determine how local governments could purchase a power plant. Number four, requested the Wyoming Public Service Commission to open an investigation on the coal study that supported these early retirements. Number five, actively participating in technical meetings on implementing Wyoming buyout bill for the coal-fired power plants. And number six, intervening in the investigation of the early power plant retirements. The coalition expended a considerable amount of money over two years' time and accomplished the following. The Public Service Commission likely would not have initiated an investigation into the coal plant closures or the integrated resource plans without the coalition's request and support. The commission found that the integrated resource plan was severely flawed, and Pacific Core now must take a radically different approach for its next 2021 IRP as a result of the coalition's testimony and arguments. Commissioner Johnson from this county and Commissioner Connolly from Lincoln County testified at that hearing. The commission wrote, "Decisions made by the commission that may effectively determine the fate of entire communities and significant portions of the Wyoming economy cannot be based on results-driven modeling that relies on an insufficiently supported surrogate for a carbon tax." And that was ordered January 15, 2021, docket number 99,000-144. The commission also initiated a formal rulemaking that would require the company to consider economic impacts to the state and the county as a result of the coalition's participation in this IRP investigation in 2019 and '20. It's crucial that they understand what this is going to do to our counties to close those coal-fired power plants down and to the nation's reliability of a power source. So concrete changes in state law to facilitate some of these concerns are being initiated in the legislature right now. And for the bills that are being considered to give the Public Service Commission more say in what happens to these power plants, there are four bills, House Bill 155, 166, 258, and 259. They have passed through the Senate, and they are now in the House. So we need to stay on top of those and encourage their support, because our very future depends on it. There's also a statewide, three-state meeting in Vernal on March 25th and 26th to discuss the future of coal-fired power plants and conversion to CO2. And a lot of this is led by Glen Rock Energy and Coal, and I think it's important that some of us could attend that meeting. It goes from noon to noon on the 25th and 26th in Vernal. Let's see, what else? As I mentioned earlier, County Assessor Davis did do a great meeting in Farson with the property owners, explaining how the property taxes are determined. And I even learned something there. And again, I learned something, how a dip in our revenue can affect an improvement district. Eden Valley Improvement District went from two mills levy, it jumped to five mills between 2016 and '17. That was a $70 million drop, $70 million drop in revenue just because of a shutdown for a few months because of an underground coal mine collapse. So if that kind of a drop in revenue could happen that fast just from a shutdown, you can imagine what a permanent closure is going to do to our revenue. Also, it affects that improvement district had bonds out at two mills. Also, they jumped to eight mills, and it could jump even higher. The only good thing in sight is that that improvement district will be paid off in 2025. But I didn't realize the effect on our tax base to our personal citizens, as well as to the county as a whole, just because of a drop in revenue. So that was a learning lesson for me. And I think, one, as a whole county, we need to really be on top of and supporting and fighting for the things that make our county the way it is and make it so special. And thanks, Mr. Davis, for doing such a great job with the property owners and explaining to them what you're doing with the assessments. Broadband is now in Farson. I was so excited, but I do have trees on the farm, so I am struggling to get really good broadband, but it will happen. And I'm so thankful to Union for stepping up to the plate and making it available to everyone. We thought it was like two years away, and here it is. So thank you, thank you for that. And I will reiterate what Mr. Lloyd said. I am in the office, I'm trying to be a full-time Commissioner, maybe that won't happen all year, but right now, I'm in there full-time, at least Monday through Wednesday. Usually, I'm out for meetings on Thursday and sometimes gone on Friday. But Monday, Wednesday, 8 to 5, I'm pretty much in the courthouse, and my cell phone is 705-6640. Email is T H O M A N, Tomonam, at SW, or at sweet.wy, dot, what is that, county? U.S., U.S. Whoops. So now you're totally confused. Tomonam@sweet.wy.us is my email. Thank you.
That all for your report?
Is that enough?
It's a wonderful report. Questions for Commissioner Tomon? Let's back up for a moment, Commissioner Tomon, to, when you talk about the special districts, the improvement district, and another district out in that area, of course, is the waste district. And we would talk about their mill levy changing, which in fact impacts their revenue to run those districts. I think that primarily comes out of Jim Bridger, is that correct?
Yes.
And so that's where we're seeing the example of the ups and downs as a result of what's happening with Jim Bridger, and using those as realizations how important it is that these four bills you talked about continue to move forward. And as I've read those, they have some teeth in them to help keep those four units from being dismantled prior to where they can be put up for sale to where they could be moved over to natural gas or continued to run. So the scary thing about all of that is realistically, when a special district financially runs it. realistically, when a special district financially runs into a situation that forces their revenue to drop severely to the point where they begin to wonder how they operate and they begin to talk about what do they do next? A lot of that responsibility is very similar to what happened in Gillette with their coal mines, even though they weren't special districts, they were private businesses. But these are special districts. It's those chair people can walk in and lay their keys on the county commissioner's desk and say, hey, it belongs to you. So we need to find ways to make sure we can keep them supported. And we need to find ways to make sure the revenue is there because the last thing we need at a point in time right now where our revenue versus our expenditures are such a wide gap, we can't add to it. And these things possibly could. So very good report, very good point out of direct impact because of what's happening with the coal and power plants. And good information regarding to what they're doing at the state legislature. We can be thankful that we have local legislators, as well as Lincoln County legislators and UANA and also on, we're at Converse County with the plan up there anyhow that are working hard because they can see that the renewables are not sufficient and also that the importance of keeping these plants and impact to not only Sweetwater County, but the other counties in the state. So thank you for referencing that. So with that good report, any other questions, commissioners, for Commissioner Tomman? Okay, with that, our next up is myself. First of all, the one thing I mentioned is last meeting is we'd go over and see where early board appointments may be considered for prior to July 1st. I believe just offhand, Community Fine Art still has a vacancy open, but I don't believe we have any applicant on file for that. So as soon as we get viable applicant, we can fill it under the health board. Three members are up, or excuse me, two members are up for the health board and both of them are eligible. The key to that is making sure that if, that they're going to apply. And if not, does that board want someone in there early for the replacements? But that's a board, health board that could be touch base with. Library board, we have a member that'll, these are all 7121 eligibility. We have a board position opening up there and that position is eligible for reappointment. Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County, we have been notified that they'll have a member where you're resigning from the board, will be relocating. And therefore, that'll be a board position that will need to be filled at July 1st, but could and has been requested that we consider working with our county attorney's office so that possibly we could have an early, I hate to use the word appointment, but an early nomination for appointment to start July 1st and that. So I would request that Ms. Shoemaker, that on the next board meeting, please put on the hospital board appointment or nomination for appointment, but we'll get the direct verbiage from the county attorney's office so we do it right. And then we can get somebody aboard that's interested and willing to put the time in and learn before they take off. Also, museum has a board appointment opening and we'll do that today. And I do have Commissioner Shanefield's follow-up to that and a request for appointment. Planning and zoning, they have a opening July 1st and that person's eligible for renewal. We just need to make sure they're going to apply and go from there. Predatory animal, we have again a opening July 1st. And having dealt with that in the past, I believe there's a special process to go through for predatory board and that type of thing, like we did the last time, residency and that type of stuff. So, and that person is eligible to be reassigned. So solid waste out of Farsen. We have a opening there, a board opening there, and that'll be 7121. And I'll do some visiting. Having worked with that board as much as over the past years as I have, I'll do some visiting with them to see what their thoughts are and that type of thing. Solid waste, number one, we did those earlier this month, our first meeting. Southwest Counseling on July 1st will have four board positions come up for reappointment. And all four positions are eligible. So we'll continue to work on that one. So Star Transit has openings on, two openings starting for July 1st. And we'll have, Mr. Lloyd, you'll need to check into those and because some of them are, serve three turns. On one of them, another one is eligible, so, and that type of thing. So you'll have to follow up and see where we're at there and see what they want to do. So with that, commissioners, when I look at the board vacancies, I see, I'd like to put the hospital on for the next board meeting because they've requested an early nomination so they can begin training. And that person will take over duties effective July 1st. Is there any other ones that you know of talking with your groups that want early?
I've recruited several candidates and they've submitted there.
Good, good.
Applications to a couple of the boards.
Yeah, and make sure we deal, talk through their chairman as liaison. So their chairmans will know what those boards need and that type of thing. So with that, we'll take care of that. Roy took care of the Roden Bridge out of SCDC. Coming from Commissioner Shanefield, they have, here's her update. It's SCDC recently approved their new logo and branding and unveiled it on their Facebook and Instagram page last week. The new website will be live April 1st. The Entrepreneurial Communities Program will kick off April 1st through the 31st with two webinars for businesses scheduled for April 7th and April 21st, with the times to be determined. And the next radio interview on 93.5 FM KREO Radio with Johnny K will be March 25th at 8:00 a.m. with a general SCDC update from Kayla. So that takes care of the report from that SCDC. Boom, 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 like that. With that, commissioners, that will conclude my report. I would just like to remind the public that in the office where our administrative assistant Sally Shoemaker works, there are business cards Sally can give out phone numbers. She can give out emails. On the website is profiles for all commissioners as to what their phone numbers are and their emails. And we think we have pretty good pictures taken. So you can pick out the best-looking commissioner or whoever and contact them however you wish. But there will be a little background there for you to look at before you make your contacts. So yes, as the commissioners have been talking this morning, it's very important that we be available and are available by phone or by email or in person. So with that, commissioners, that'll conclude my report. I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lloyd?
In that picture comment, you're all playing for second place.
If you say so.
What's the name of the contest?
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? I hate to leave that door open for you, Mr. Lloyd. But anyhow, it has been. So with that, our next order of business will be tab C, which is filing of the positions. But before we get started, I think we're right on time, but I think we need about a 10-minute break. So let's, let's report back here at 9:40, commissioners? You okay with that?
Sure.
All right, let's take a break till 9:40, so.
Next Cindy.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order and with that we will begin with our agenda and we'll start again with action presentation items. Tab C, which is filing of the positions and salaries for outside entities funded by Sweetwater County. And to present this is our county clerk, Ms. Cindy Lane. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. We're at the time where we do the filing of gross salaries for Sweetwater County pursuant to Wyoming State Statute eighteen three dash five one six E. Any nonprofit corporation which receives at least twenty-five percent of its total annual budget from county funds, state funds, or both in combination shall annually submit a list of all full-time positions employed by the corporation and the wages and salaries paid each position without the name of the employee to the commission, board, council, or agency from which the funds are received. In our report are the employment information for Western Wyoming Family Planning, volunteer information and referral, Sweetwater County Library, Sweetwater County Historical Museum, Youth Home Incorporated, Southwest Counseling, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport, YWCA of Sweetwater County, Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County, Hospice of Sweetwater County, Golden Hour Senior Citizen Center, Young at Heart Senior Citizen Center, Board of Health, Sweetwater Family Resource Center, Sweetwater County Conservation District, Food Bank of Sweetwater County, Boys and Girls Club of Sweetwater County Cooperative Extension, Sweetwater County Events Complex, Castle Rock Hospital District, Eden Valley Improvement District, and the Eden Valley Telehealth Doing Business as the Big Sandy Clinic.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions regarding the filing of the positions and salaries for outside entities funded by Sweetwater County?
I do have one commission. If they're tied to a foundation or something else, are they getting additional salary from somewhere else or is this their total salary? Or just the county's salary?
No, it is their total salaries. I'm not sure where they get all of their funds from. Just anytime we have twenty-five percent interest from state or a combination with county, it has to be published.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions Commissioners for Clerk Lane? With that Commissioners, your pleasure regarding the filing of the positions and salaries for outside entities funded by Sweetwater County?
I'd so move that we would accept them as presented.
We have a motion to accept as presented. Is there a second?
Yes, I will second.
Okay, you got a motion to accept as presented by Commissioner Lloyd, a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Commissioners all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving forward, our next agenda item is the approval of sixteen Community Charitable Relief Program Grant Award Agreements. And to present this portion of our agenda is Ms. Christina Marshall. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
I'm used to my Zoom.
I hear you. We all are. It's nice to see you in person. It's nice to be able to see your pleasant smile.
Well, thank you. So let me just get set up. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll actually be presenting the next four agenda items. So can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're doing good.
So this first item, Sweetwater County was previously awarded charitable, community charitable relief pass-through funding to local organizations in the community that provided goods, services, or payments to the public related to the COVID-19 public health emergency. After review of supporting documentation, county staff determined that sixteen agencies qualified for grant reimbursement and their award agreements need to be approved prior to the payment distribution. So I'm going to go through all sixteen, even though I'm sure you'll appreciate that I condensed the motion. So the first charitable organization is Holy Communion Ministries. Their reimbursement will total thirty thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. That is a slight reduction from their original award due to some expenditures being outside of the term of the grant award or the grant rules. The number two, Golden Hour Senior Center, they will receive two thousand seven hundred two dollars, which was their full award. Item three, Sweetwater Events Complex Foundation, they will receive forty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents. That's a slight reduction due to some corrections. Number four, VIRS Respite Care, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. That's the full award and reimbursement. Number five, Food Bank of Sweetwater County, they will receive their full award of two thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Number six, Union Congregation Church, United Church of Christ, they will receive their full award of one thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars and two cents. Number seven, Green River Development Fund, they will receive a reduction of or to the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents. That was due to some additional documentation they provided for lost revenue. Number eight, United Way of Southwest Wyoming, their first award was reduced to one hundred eighty thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And again, that's due to some documentation we've received. And as you may recall, we did not have this documentation on the front end of the application process. Continuing on to number nine, Sweetwater Climb, they will receive their full award of twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Number ten, Youth Home, they will receive their full award of one thousand seven hundred dollars. Number eleven, Mount of Olives Lutheran Church, they will receive their full award of two thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Number twelve, Sweetwater Family Resource Center, they will receive their full award of forty-six thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Number thirteen, Rock Springs Renewal Fund, Inc., they will receive their full award of eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Number fourteen, YWCF Sweetwater County, they will receive their full award of one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Number fifteen, The Actors Mission, they will receive a reduced award due to documentation in the amount of forty-eight thousand twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. And then last, number sixteen, United Way of Southwest Wyoming, application number two, they will receive the full amount of two hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred and one dollar. The total amount of all sixteen is seven hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Just to note, this funding had to be spent in a manner consistent with all state and federal laws, including the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, otherwise known as the CARES Act, and comply with the charitable or the Community Charitable Relief Program Emergency Rules and Regulations. This money, just to clarify, is not discretionary. It is very specific to rules. And so unfortunately, not everyone could qualify for this funding. With that, I'm happy to answer any question, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Marshall? Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I think Ms. Marshall, once again, great work on this project. I know there was a lot of time and energy put into figuring out who qualified because there wasn't a lot of guidance and or consistent guidance from some of our provider entities on this. Could you, and not giving specific information to the organizations that didn't receive funding, could you maybe clarify what some of the exact, some of the reasons that made it so we couldn't give some of this funding away? I think it'd be good for folks to know some of the things that disqualified folks because the four organizations that we weren't able to give money for and I just want to clarify, Ms. Marshall and I spent multiple hours having discussions about these situations. So I totally agree with her decisions and I just think it would be good for folks to know some of the things that made some organizations not eligible.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so there were four entities who, after being awarded funding, unfortunately, after review of their documentation, did not receive endorsement for reimbursement. As a reminder, when this was rolled out at the very, very end of December, the commission scrambled to first get an application, which was really just a name, formality, a couple of sentences. Unfortunately, this funding is included in our schedule of expenditures for federal awards. It will be subject to an audit and so obviously we want to make sure that we're understanding the rules, implementing the rules, and passing an audit to the best of our ability. Nothing, of course, is foolproof. So in terms of the rules, you may notice in each of the contracts, attachment B is a copy of the rules that were provided. Those are emergency rules provided by the governor's office. These are actually different than the rules that were provided with the coronavirus relief grants that you may recall and is also next on the agenda. So each, so how do I put this simply? You have one main pot of money going through the state of Wyoming, but then it's being targeted for specific uses and purposes. In this case, on page one-one of any of the attachment Bs, one of the first things to remember is that a charitable organization was defined as a nonprofit entity, including churches, which qualifies as tax-exempt of the Internal Revenue Code and which provided goods, services, or payments to the public related to the COVID public health emergency. That in itself was one underlying condition in which one did not qualify. You can't just have lost revenue, for example, and be a nonprofit. You had to have provided some type of good services or payments at least partially during the pandemic. The second item that I'd just like to point out, and this is regarding to lost revenue, and the four entities that did not receive endorsement for reimbursement, they were all about lost revenue. The first part states that to qualify under that, you have to have some, you have to prove generated lost revenue between March nineteenth of twenty twenty and December thirtieth, twenty twenty, compared to March nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and December thirtieth, twenty nineteen. So if your profit-loss statement for revenue showed a, an increase from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, that excluded them. And that was the case in a couple of them. You may be wondering, how can that be? And I want to be very clear, it's not net income. You may have not had any expenses, but the rules clearly state less revenue. Some entities actually received tremendous support from our community. They received a lot of donations and that put them from qualifying. The second part of this lost income rule that excluded two entities was in, in the rules, page I, or one-seven, I guess, I seven. Section C, it says, "Awards issued for lost donation revenue or other revenue must be calculated using a clear formula." You take the qualifying gross loss to donation revenue. So let's say you cannot hold a fundraiser. You're taking, you're comparing what you got in two thousand and nineteen and what you didn't get from twenty twenty. But you have to minus any state, federal loans, grants, business interruption stipend programs, funds, relief program funds, or mitigation program funds issued as a relief relating to COVID-19. So maybe you passed each of the previous thresholds, but at the end of the day, if, for example, you've received funding from the Wyoming Business Council's Endurance Fund, we had to minus that out. And I think one of the issues is the state is saying we don't want one entity going to each potential funding source and coming out way, way ahead. You know, obviously, they want to make them whole again, but not at a big surplus. So Commissioner Lloyd, does that answer your question?
It does. And I just want to say, as we sit in there and, and I know you said you'd also had a conversation with Commissioner Toman, and you vetted through the process with me, it made total sense to why some of these organizations didn't. And I think in light of some of the news articles that came, come out, I think it's important for people to understand why people don't qualify, why people do qualify. So great explanation. I didn't expect anything less than that, but it was, it was very good and helpful, so. And I guess the only other thing I would have, if it's okay for a follow-up, Mr. Chairman, would be, just so there's a clarification, this money was specific grant funding from the state based upon money for low income. And so we're very specific in the areas we can spend this money and provide this money to. Because I think there's confusion when people see some of this special funding come down, thinking we can use it in any scope we want. But it was very specific to these nonprofit organizations, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lloyd, that is correct. This is very narrow. As broad as the rules may sound, it's up to interpretation, but it is clear that what you qualified for under this.
Or as clear as mud.
Qualifying dates, what is a nonprofit entity compared to the coronavirus relief funding? Same pass-through funding through the state of Wyoming, very different qualifications.
Thank you very much. I just think those clarifications help to the public.
Thank you very much. Good questions, good answers. Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Any other questions for Ms. Marshall Commissioners? Well, with no further questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the sixteen Community Charitable Relief Program Grant Award Agreements?
I would, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign sixteen Community Charitable Relief Program Grant Award Agreements.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. I believe you're still up, Ms. Marshall.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is item number two for the approval of the coronavirus relief sub-grant agreement for Southwest Counseling. And I believe this executive director, Linda Aker, might be on the Zoom call, so.
Looking up, I don't.
Okay.
Oh, there she is. Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay, so Sweetwater County County sponsored a third Southwest Counseling Service project that was awarded two hundred eighty thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents in coronavirus relief grant or CRG funding from the State Loan and Investment Board. Now, compared to the charitable relief, this funding also, in similar ways, is to assist with expensing expenses related to COVID nineteen, public health emergency and crisis, but it was not targeted for nonprofit entities. So the, this grant award will be passed through to reimburse Southwest Counseling Service for documented payroll expenses related COVID nineteen, including sick leave implementation and modified procedures to keep the facilities open, monitoring, additional janitorial, telehealth, psychiatric provider, and other miscellaneous items. So the grant agreement from the State Loan and Investment Board included this project, and it was originally ratified by the commission on February second, twenty twenty-one. So this sub-grant agreement was delayed until I received confirmation of the approved reimbursement, which occurred on March fifth, twenty twenty-one. That brings a total payment under the coronavirus relief grant of five hundred seventy-three thousand twenty dollars and ten cents to Southwest Counseling. I just want to note, this particular reimbursement is significant. Sweetwater County received reimbursement for all thirteen reimbursement requests, for thirteen contracts, received everything. This was kind of a hail mary at the end of the game. Southwest Counseling worked very hard to provide documentation to prove these expenses and not do a generic summary. So I had a box probably six to eight inches of every Zoom meeting, every email, time cards proving that they modified procedures because of COVID nineteen. I, and as a final note before letting Linda talk, I know you're all aware, there's the American Rescue Plan, More Stimulus Bunny. We are not sure how that will be rolled out, but according to information I've already received, it will be more broad and could be for more lost revenue. So we'll keep an eye on that. So that's all I have on this one. And I'd like to ask the executive director, if she'd like to add anything.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Ms. Akers, are you wishing to add anything?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, well, I do want to add something. I think it's really important when people do tremendous work that they get recognized. And Christina has been just outstanding on all the work with Southwest Counseling. She's very detailed, and I think Christina will also say the people that she works with at Southwest Counseling can provide you all the documentation that you possibly will need, to ensure that we will meet the standards. So very appreciative of the work that the county has done with Southwest Counseling. And Ms. Laura, and Ms. Melissa, and Ms. Carrie, and Stacy, were critically involved in putting together this documentation that we are going to be receiving.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Akers. At this point in time, Commissioners, any questions for either Ms. Marshall or Ms. Akers? With no questions, I might say, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this Corona's Relief Sub Grant Agreement for Southwest Counseling Service and their payroll project and authorizing the chairman to sign?
I will so move. Authorizing you to sign.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tolman to approve and authorize the chairman to sign. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
I just would have a question, not related to this grant, but did the county itself qualify for the sick leave and payroll?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Tolman, yes, and we were fully reimbursed for Sweetwater County Government's payroll for sick leave quarantine, as well as the Emergency Operations Center payroll for all staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's ongoing. They're still having sick leave.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. So good question.
But actually, unfortunately, that might fall under the American Rescue Plan, because we had to have our documents in by December fifteenth, so.
Very good. Thank you very much. Other questions for Ms. Marshall? For the discussion? With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Good job. You're still have the floor, Ms. Marshall?
So, Mr. Chairman, four different grant agenda items, four very different qualifications. So now we're switching gears towards the Business Council and Economic Development. I also have here Kayla McDonald, the Economic Development Specialist with Sweetwater County. So Sweetwater County was awarded the Rural Development Grant Funding in the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars from the Wyoming Business Council. You may recall, a couple meetings ago, we discussed this. The purpose of this funding is to assist projects that improve the conditions of rural Wyoming. The county will use the funding to hire a consulting firm, entrepreneurial communities, and participate in their quote-unquote homegrown, home, wait, grow home. I want to see, grown, Grow Home, which is a new name for them, program. This is a virtual platform that connects regional entrepreneurs and small business owners in rural communities with a team of coaches, consultants, and advisors. The goal of this actual project, though, is to assist our small businesses recover from the pandemic in Sweetwater County. It is a joint effort between the county, the cities of Rock Springs and Green River, S E D C, Chambers Commerce, Main Street Offices, and the Wyoming Business Council. As the first of its kind in Wyoming, it actually has the potential to become a statewide project. So in terms of the budget, we applied for four thousand dollars. We were awarded three thousand six hundred. It, it's not a failure, because we actually received forty-five percent more funding than their maximum amount. So, you know, every dollar counts. The cities of Rock Springs and Green River have already confirmed their commitment to each contribute two hundred dollars each for that ten percent shortfall, making the budget four thousand. As a reminder, that is a special deal, because we are a beta project. We're the guinea pig in the state and with entrepreneurial communities. And also, Sweetwater County will provide an income match of approximately three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents for Kayla's time, which is estimated payroll, spending fifty percent of her time for one and a half months to carry out this project. So with that, that's my information for you. Kayla, did you need, would you like to add anything? Okay. So you may know in your packet, they actually, this is considered a micro grant. There is not a grant contract. I PDF'd the email. But you're also being asked to not just accept the award, but sign the service agreement with entrepreneurial communities for the Grow Home Project. So we could get going, and Kayla can kick that off today.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall, and thank you for being here, Ms. McDonald with S E D C. So with that, Commissioners, any questions for either Ms. McDonald or Ms. Marshall? With no questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the approving the Rural Development Grant Award from the Wyoming Business Council and authorize the chairman to sign the service agreement with entrepreneurial communities for the Grow Home Project?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd?
I would so move.
We have a motion to approve the grant and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Tolman. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Marshall, Ms. McDonald. Up next, Ms. Marshall, the floor is still yours.
Okay. So, and, Mr. Chairman, I believe the sheriff, John Grossnickel, is joining us.
He is. Good morning, Sheriff. Thank you for joining us, and we'll turn the floor over to Ms. McDonald.
Marshall.
Ms. Marshall, thank you. It was going so good. Senior moment.
So this is my last agenda item. Sweetwater County was awarded a High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area or HIDA grant funding in the amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars from the Wyoming Division of Criminal Investigation. The purpose of this funding is to reduce drug use by eliminating or disrupting drug trafficking organizations. This is accomplished by coordinating federal, state, and local drug enforcement efforts. The sheriff's office is assigning one of its employees to perform task force officer or TFO duties as part of the Southwest Enforcement Team. This collaboration has actually been in existence for many years, and is one of the most productive ways that the Drug Enforcement Agency enforces drug laws. So the HIDA funding will pay for salary costs and a portion of the benefits related to TFO work that is separated out on DCI time sheets, although overtime is reimbursed at one hundred percent. So as a note in the project budget, the benefits is actually capped at thirty-five percent of the amount of salaries and wages. So the overage is included in the sheriff's department budget. And again, it's primarily just for the health insurance. I work with Brenda to include that in the budget for the fiscal year. These expenses, actually, all expenses incurred as of January first to present will be reimbursed following approval of this agreement. That's all I have, and I'd like to ask the sheriff if he'd like to add anything else.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Sheriff Grossnickel, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as Christina said, as long as I've been here at the sheriff's office, which it's been a long time, we've had, we've had this grant. Not only does it give us the ability to reduce the drug trafficking and drug cases, we're also able to piggyback through state statute with asset forfeitures. And anytime that those come because of these cases, the sheriff's office does receive some kind of financial compensation, depending on what those forfeitures are. So they go hand in hand.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, any questions for either Ms. Marshall or the Sheriff Grossnickel? No questions. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this subcontract and authorizing chairman to sign?
I would move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tolman to approve and authorize chairman to sign the twenty twenty-one High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Grant Subcontract. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So with that, we'll move forward. Ms. Marshall, thank you. You're bringing a whole new meaning to the grants manager's position with everything we've been doing, and you're staying aboard, and you continue to provide us good guidance and monitoring, all that with the grants. And we appreciate it very much. And we know, we know how tiring is the time you put in, and we want you to know it does not go unnoticed. Thank you. Sheriff, are you still there? You are. I'd like to congratulate you for your appointment to the Executive Board for the Wyoming Sheriff's Association. And I truly believe you will be an asset to that board. And I truly believe we'll get some great representation from Sweetwater County through you. So congratulations, and may the best be ahead of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, a big thank you to Christina. She's always a pleasure to work with and lead us in the right direction, because we know if we don't go that way, it could turn out horribly for the county if, if those grants aren't followed precisely.
Exactly. And I appreciate your comments, because you're right on. Thank you very much. You have a good day. Tell your staff thanks for all they do, and tell everybody to please be safe.
We will, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Moving forward, our next up is Tab H. It's a Resolution two-one dash zero-three dash C C dash zero-two, the authorization of a special prosecutor. And here to present that, I believe, is Mr. De Leon with the County Attorney's Office. Good morning, Mr. De Leon.
Good morning. As you are all aware, the County Attorney's Office handles somewhere in the neighborhood of eight thousand cases a year. And from time to time, when the county attorney, as county and prosecuting attorney, becomes aware of a criminal case, which includes juvenile cases as well. If there is a case that there would be a conflict of interest or the appearance thereof, then the county attorney asks the commission to approve the, the hiring of outside counsel to review and potentially prosecute that particular case. In this circumstance, we've reached out to the other county attorneys, and Lincoln County has offered to be able to handle this case. And also, as you know, that case would be handled without any cost to the county. As such, we would ask for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing appointment of a special prosecutor.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Commissioners, any question for Mr. De Leon? With that, I would ask the Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution two-one dash zero-three dash C C dash zero-two, which is a resolution authorizing the appointment of a special prosecutor?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lloyd?
I would go ahead and make, say, I would approve that motion for Resolution number twenty-one dash oh-three, C C oh-two, as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Tolman. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Up next will be Tab I, which is a cooperative agreement between YDOT, the city of Rock Springs, and Sweetwater County for the Rock Springs Urban System. Here to present that is Mr. Legursky, our Public Works Director. Good morning, Mr. Legursky.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Thank you. What you have before you is a cooperative agreement between YDOT, the city of Rock Springs, and Sweetwater County. It's for the urban system that is defined by the Urban Systems Map of Rock Springs. Green River has one, too. Just so you guys know, it's a federal program that anybody in Wyoming that has over five thousand residents, by the latest census, can actually enroll in this program, and they get money from the, from the feds, basically. The latest one for the city of Rock Springs is the Interchange Road project that's going on. Some of that funding, along with other grants and YDOT help, help pay for that new bridge and the interchange and everything that's going on right now on the interstate. So it's a very good program. We meet once a year to go over stuff. And we looked last year, and our bylaws and stuff hadn't been updated since two thousand. So the cooperative agreement and the bylaws, that's what you see in front of you. You will not have the original, because they're over in the city of Rock Springs right now. Hopefully, they'll approve them tonight, and then we'll get you the originals later this week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Legursky?
Does the chairman sign, or do we all sign?
Just Chairman.
Any other questions, Commissioners? With that, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding approving the amended and restated cooperative agreement between YDOT, the city of Rock Springs, and Sweetwater County for the Urban Systems Program in the Rock Springs urban area, and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents?
I will so move.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tolman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Legursky. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Next will be a request to approval of a staff vacant position in the Facilities Department. Here to present that to us is Mr. McLean from. Here to present that to us is Mr. McLean from our HR Director and along with him is Mr. Legursky from Public Works. Good morning, Gary.
Good morning.
Welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. In your packets is a request to restaff a vacancy in the Building Maintenance Department. Essentially, what the department is looking at doing, as you may be aware, we had two vacancies recently. One in the Facilities Department as a result of a unfortunate passing of an employee and the second one in the Parks and Rec Department. And so, after some discussions and back and forth on this, it looks like the overall goal, if you remember back two years ago, when we looked at bringing the Parks and Rec Department into the Facilities Department, one of the goals of that was to be able to share equipment, staff, other resources, and training to take care of the parks facilities and to share and help them assist in taking care of the county facilities. Since that time, I think that's largely been accomplished and has been mutually beneficial for both agencies. In this winter and particularly the Parks folks are used to assist in snow removal and other maintenance tasks and then with some more technical maintenance issues, the current building maintenance staff assists in the maintenance of the park facilities. So, in this particular request, in Public Works Director Gene Legursky is not requesting to replace both positions, but rather to replace one position and to have that position be able to, as we're currently doing, help out in both areas. In other words, to facilitate maintenance and assist with maintenance in the Parks Department as well as the county buildings. So, what you have in front of you is a cost summary for that. Any differences in cost would be due to health insurance. I think that's noted there. And then not to replace the current vacancy in the Parks Department and you see this sixty-four thousand dollar savings roughly with the result from that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Commissioners, any... Gene, do you have anything more to add? Go ahead.
No, we're just, you know, over the last two years, that's been a goal of ours is to redo staff and do it in a reasonable way. One of the other things I'd like to point out is, back in 2019, 2020, the maintenance staff had eight people. Total payroll was eight-hundred sixteen thousand one hundred eighty-eight. Current projected payroll for the Maintenance Department is six-hundred twenty-seven thousand four ninety-five. So, a twenty-three percent decrease. Parks and Rec had six-point-two-five full-time equivalent people back in 2019 and 20. That was three-hundred-and-forty thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-seven in total payroll. This year, we're projected to have four-point-five total projected for a total cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand and sixty dollars. Total decrease of employment payroll costs of twenty-six percent. So, we're heading in the right direction. We just can't cut too much further else we're going to be losing services.
We gotta watch. Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for either Mr. McLean or Mr. Legursky? Okay, if there's no questions, Commissioners, your pleasure.
I will make a motion to replace that position.
We have a motion to approve the restaffing of the maintenance worker position. Is that correct? Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, just a quick point. I've been pretty tough on, as we going through these positions, inconsistency and I was able to sit down and meet with Mr. Legursky about this position a couple of times, as late as yesterday and once after the last meeting and I think, and we had discussed some of the numbers he presented and the percentage of cuts we've already seen from his departments and I think based upon that concept and his willingness to look outside of the box and combine two positions to go into one, makes me feel comfortable that we should move forward in filling this position.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other comments Commissioners? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. With that, as we move on, next order of business is request approval of the UMR Summary Plan Description and UMR Planned Amendments. And here to present that is our HR Director, Mr. McLean. Again, good morning Gary and welcome. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. As we've seen in the last few meetings, we've had some documents necessary as we've gone through open enrollment to affirm our agreement with the various entities necessary to provide health insurance for the county. This particular agreement with UMR is for the Summary Plan Document. The Summary Plan Document is basically the contract with UMR and also with employees for the coverage that we're going to provide. And so, that's basically how tells them how claims will be processed. As you remember, we're a self-funded plan. It's our plan. And the Summary Plan Document is how we communicate to them what claims will be paid and what won't be paid. There's not a lot of changes in here, but there are a couple notable ones that I'll bring forth. One is the addition of Teladoc Services. As you know, throughout the COVID pandemic and as a trend in society generally is a movement to be able to access healthcare professionals from your home or from other locations as a way of delivering services, especially low-cost services. So, this is an amendment, basically, to instruct them how to handle Teladoc Services. Maybe more significantly in this year, and we discussed this at length earlier in previous meetings, but we're removing the care management responsibilities from UMR and moving those to Accolade. You've probably seen some of the emails from Accolade come through and basically, what we're trying to do is to get somebody more focused on reaching out to individuals, making them aware of options to better manage their care, to reduce costs with pharmaceutical drugs, using some of the programs that we have available and to better coordinate care in the case of complex cases. So, Accolade went live on March first. We spent from January to March getting that built and communicated and organized. We've already seen a couple significant savings in the drug arena in the neighborhood of about sixty-five thousand dollars on one individual. So, we're hoping that will continue. As you probably remember, we anticipated to see a three percent cost savings just from the implementation of Accolade and right now, we're on track to do that. So, those are the two main amendments to the Summary Plan Document and I'd like to request the Board to approve the SPD and authorize the Chairman to sign.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLean. Questions for Mr. McLean, Commissioners? No questions Commissioners? With that, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding approval of the UMR Summary Plan Description and UMR Planned Amendments and authorizing the Chairman to sign all documents?
I'd so move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve. Is there a second?
Yes.
Got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Appreciate it. This is moving forward as you said it would. With that, our next item is Tab L, which is the Museum Board Appointment. And I believe with that, let me get there. All right, we have a three-year term and it's due to the resignation of Mr. Barney. This will fill an unexpired term through seven-one-twenty-two, eligible for reappointment. Since he resigned, that's not a question. New applicants, Ian Parker and G. Bud Allen. I did hear from the liaison of the Museum Board and they are... That liaison, Commissioner Schoenfeld, is recommending that we appoint Ian Parker to that board position. Commissioners, your thoughts about the other applicants or whatever? So, I'll floor up to my other Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
Yeah, I don't know Mr. Parker and I, but I do know a little bit about Mr. Allen. I do appreciate them giving a little more information in their packet than some of the other candidates. It makes it easier to make a decision and I would just agree with and take the recommendation of the liaison, Commissioner Schoenfeld, and move forward with Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any comments, Commissioner Toman?
I would second the motion.
Alrighty. Before I acknowledge the motion and second, I would like to say I know Ian Parker because he was a student of mine at Rock Springs High School and great individual, great young man in school, good student, just all-around solid person. So, I also can support the liaison's recommendation and I believe at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Lloyd to appoint Ian Parker to the unexpired term of the Museum Board for Barney.
I would so move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Before we move forward, I'd like to thank Mr. Barney for his time served on the Museum Board and other times boards he served on throughout the community. He was on Tripartite with me as well and a very, very excellent board member in all the areas he served and I'd like to thank him for his services. With that, all Commissioners in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Ian Parker will be appointed to the Museum Board. With that, as we move forward, Commissioners, I did put on the agenda for this meeting, as we said the last meeting, to prepare for our revenue discussions. At our next board meeting, that'll be presented by Mr. Slaughter and Ms. Berry. Anything you wish to add that you're thinking about for consideration for that next meeting and that agenda topic?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Some of the graphs that the Treasurer and the Assessor could provide, as have been done in the past, that show where our income is coming from, that's kind of helpful if they could do that again, maybe.
That was, yeah. I think that was done by Mark Cot.
I'm not Mark Cot though, so I can't do it.
I don't think it was by the assessors and that, so, and I don't...
Like this, with the percentages of where our revenue is coming from. Actually, this is Assessor has...
That would have come out of probably the...
He's already done it. So, I guess, say, asking Mr. Divas to just share that again with the whole Commission of where the Sweetwater County valuation for the 2020 tax year actually came from, comes from.
And Mr. Divas, I believe, is listening, so I believe he'll probably catch up with you and see what else you need.
I guess I just need to clarify. In my report, I did say that that underground coal valuation for that special district at Farson, it was very high, but that was just for that particular district that was affected by the revenue from Jim Bridger.
Very good. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Divas.
Anything else for the discussion next week, Commissioners? Mr. Lloyd?
No, I just, I think Rob did a really good job in presenting the last meeting and Mr. Divas. I hate to give Treasurer Slaughter any undue credit whenever possible, but I do think most of the work was probably done by Assessor Divas, but I do appreciate, all kidding aside, all the information. I think it was really helpful in the format shared to be able to move forward in our discussion and I, as I said, I really think this information and having these kind of conversations would have made last year's budget a little more successful and I think we may have looked at things differently and I really appreciate the work of those guys and Bonnie to help get us to that point and I look forward to having that discussion, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Anything else before I add my two cents?
It is about money, so you should add more than two cents.
I hear you. It's going to take more than two cents. Yeah, as that discussion moves forward, I think for next week, I'd like to request that our reserve account be cleaned up. We have four or five accounts in there with different things that have been hanging in there. So, I'd like it cleaned up and Commissioners recommend if there's a specific reserve account that we need to start putting money in and I'll just use this. Do we need a capital reserve account to put money in every year as we move forward? With that keeping in mind, remember when we get our report from the SCDC regarding the Middle Baxter Project, there'll be some recommendations there and moving forward. And I got a feeling it might focus about the water issue first and, of course, with the Middle Baxter Project, that MOU between the two cities and counties for that study is taking place and as we get that results and recommendations and look at them, I'd just like to remind the Commissioners that we weren't here at the time when that all started. The county is the lead on that. So, we will, you know, look it over. We'll visit with our partners, the two cities, but then primarily, we'll have to take the lead on that as to figuring out with input from them how we need to forward and that'll take some investment dollars as well as continually to remind that in order to get grants at the state for economic development. The county is, and cities are looked at to take more collaborative approach as partnerships with private business to assist in getting those economic development projects moving forward. So, we'll have some of that coming forward. So, we need to keep those things in mind as we set that reserve limit. But the most, one thing with regard to the reserve limit that I must remind our Commissioners that we continue, even with some assistance I see coming from the New Cares Act, as well as what we've seen coming, we have a huge gap between revenues and expenditures. And even with the assistance that we're getting through cares or through increased revenue, we need to start to narrow that gap. So, this, for this next budget. So, that continued, looking at the twenty to thirty percent decrease in budgets has got to stay at the forefront because of that gap. So, I just want to remind everybody that's probably going to be a huge focus of mine as we move into even the reserve accounts because the reserve accounts will impact all that. Commissioner Lloyd, you look like you have a question.
Yeah, I just, I think, just to piggyback to what you're saying, Mr. Commissioner, I was at the Starbus meeting last night and I, board meeting, and I made this comment. I think this is a really interesting budget because not only do we have the deficits and our revenues aren't matching our expenditures, it's going to be a fluid decision because some of this stuff within the CARE Act money, we may not even have the rules or the concepts of how we can utilize that money before we have to make these decisions. And so, I think we have to move forward full-throttle, you know, and then as information comes, we may have to make some adjustments and changes because I just don't know if we're going to, as these different things come through, the timeliness as we have to complete our statutory duty. So, this becomes an interesting thing, but I do agree, even though we do get assistance that may help us on a short term, we have to look at the long-term situation.
That, I call, in education, I called that soft money. And when the soft money runs out, then the real money's got to come from somewheres and that gap is still going to be there even with soft money. So, I agree with you one hundred and ten percent. We need to continue moving forward. We don't know what the sideboards are. I do not want to build false hopes in any of the funding organizations that we fund with regard to the New Cares money because it's, it is soft, very soft money and it's not going to be there forever and it'll come in two installments for what we qualify. So, I still think we have to focus in the long run and that focus is getting those revenue and expenditure gap as narrow, if not closed, over the next couple of years. Okay? Anything else to add? Getting ready for this agenda item for next meeting. Alrighty, then that'll close that discussion on that agenda item. Our next is under Other. Commissioners, anything to add for the good of the order or for something you'd like to see on future meetings? Okay, with that, before we break for executive session, I'd like to remind everyone that had the invite for the special workshop at one-thirty, Commissioner Lloyd, that will convene for. Also, we will go into executive session for contract... we will go into executive session for contracts and personnel. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'd so move.
So moved to go into executive session for contracts and personnel. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Discussion part, I basically is if there's any, I don't anticipate any action, but if there is, we may have action afterwards. So, but I don't anticipate any. All those in favor going into the executive session signify by saying aye.